Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January the 23rd, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. And today, I'm very proud to have with us Kim Erwin, who is the executive director of the Brazos Pregnancy Clinic, here to give the education. But as always, we always have our backup up here, the illustrious pastor Mike McMahon, just in case. They know each other well. Y'all got to quit dating like that. People are talking about y'all out there. So, Kim, please.
Do you pray with me, please? Holy Lord God, King of the universe, we thank you, Father, for this day you've given us. We thank you for the reign that you've given us for the nourishment of the land. We ask, Lord God, as you always bring chaos into order, that you bring this counsel, Lord God, that you help them to bring the chaos into order, Lord God. That as you lead them, that you help the people to remember, Lord God, that you did choose them, that you have picked each and every one of them, that you help them to remember that they have the discernment that you gave them, Lord God, that you have given them for edification and for correction. Help them to choose this day, Lord God, for your divine will. Help them to use it for your glorification. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I pledge a great state of Texas.
I'm in the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the text, one state under God, one and universal.
Okay. No special presentation, right? So, service awards. Oh, we got some illustrious presentations this morning.
Yes, sir. Judge Massengill, Commissioner Eagle, would y'all like to come down with the rest of the court?
Okay. No, that's fine. Yeah. Stop standing in front of her.
Thank you.
It felt like five minutes.
The next to service award goes to Michael Harris for five years.
Michael Harris, we know him well. He's with everything here. He's on the SART team deal. He does a real good job on that, too, Sheriff. I'm with him on that.
He does a great job at everything he does. He was promoted investigator here a while back, and he takes the bull by the horns and gets a job done. So, I'm very proud of him. So, congratulations on that.
Okay, and the next then is Beverly Reddy.
Yes, sir.
Oh, no. She's brought her rally cheering squad with her down there. I've seen them. Beverly, you do a great job.
Thank you.
I tell you, with Gloria Burton and them, I said, no throwing beer cans and throwing balloons and stuff up here. Y'all behave yourselves up there. These custodians. Okay, next is Andrea Sutton.
She's unable to attend this morning.
She's back there working. That's because Drew and Owen will not let her out of her little cove-a-hill back there.
Probably so. Yes, sir. Actually, the last three service award recipients are unable to attend this morning.
Okay. And then 15 years Debbie McNarrel. Who's, where does Department of Debbie work in?
Purchasing.
Purchasing. You don't let her out either, Glenn? Okay. Crack the whip, okay. Then how about April Rodriguez, 20 years?
Yes, sir. She's 911 operator, and she's unable to attend this morning.
Well, let's give all those people a big hand. Okay. All right. Next is our citizens comment at large. We really don't have that kind of an agenda here this morning. We got a real short one, as a matter of fact. So, I don't have any citizens sign up to make any comments at large or no citizens signed up for the, to make comments on the agenda items, which brings us then to the miscellaneous business to be discussed. And we've got only six items there, and the number one and number five is to convene into executive sessions. So, rather than convening into those executive sessions now and make all of y'all wait and keep all the departments head tied up, we're going to go ahead and take the rest of the items and then go through the consent agenda, personnel, and all the other stuff if that's all right with everybody. So, we're going to leave that. I can see where Fay is. If you're all right with that, then I know that we're in good shape. I would hate for you to stay here while we're in executive session. Richard, you agree with that, right? Okay. All right. I told Fay and Richard today that people see them sitting together at every commissioner's court, and they're saying that they're dating, and I want to dispel that rumor right now. They're not dating. Okay. Anyway, the first item then is to consider and take appropriate action to promote a jailer. So, got the sheriff and Eric.
So, number two and three, kind of over the same situation. I had two promotional opportunities open up within the jail. I had two supervisors that moved over to the patrol division and which opened up those two spots for jailers to apply for. I had three applicants. All three of them did really well. They went before an interview board consisting of myself and two jail administrators and our training coordinator, who have had extensive experience within the jail. After the interviews were done, we came to the conclusion that both, that two out of the three are ready for those promotional positions, and we think they'll do a good job, so.
And this is just promoting somebody into increased duties?
Correct.
And giving them step one pay at those duties?
Yes, sir.
And then you had also mentioned that this, as the new jailers come in, it will be a reduced salary from what the current ones were making, so that would be a savings there.
Yes.
Thank you for the information.
Absolutely.
It was very helpful.
Yes.
I tell you, every year when the sheriff and I meet with the jail standards people, they are very complimentary about the sheriff and Eric, about the morale and the training, about how the jail personnel function and the relationship that the jail personnel have with the inmates. And they always mention that to the sheriff and me when we're up there signing the form, which, by the way, the sheriff has managed to do, what, 14 times in a row now?
Fifteen.
I didn't mean to cut you short, Sheriff, okay? Fifteen times in a row, that jail has passed, so it's really a good deal. So, thank you. Great. So, do I hear a motion?
Well, yeah, Judge, can I just go ahead and combine number two and three?
Yes. Yeah, that's a good idea.
And take appropriate action to promote two jailers, step one, at $47.5, two corporals, step one, at $50,000, effective Monday, January 22nd.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to promote a jailer from step one, $47.5, to corporal and, well, both of them, from step one, $47.5, to corporal, which would be $50,000, effective Monday, January the 22nd, 2024, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Eric. Okay. Item number four, consider and take appropriate action to promote a title clerk, one, $36,000, to data specialist, DS 138-8. Oh, looky here.
Good morning.
Look at that. Good morning. God, we.
Sorry, Andy couldn't be here today. She had a death in the family, so I'm filling in for her. What we're wanting to do is, I was the data specialist that went to Carrie's position, which was the chief deputy. So, the bookkeeper position was open. We are now wanting to promote Tiffany from clerk one to the data specialist, what I was at, which is the bookkeeper position. She'll have more duties. She'll work hand-in-hand with auditors for month-ending stuff and work hand-in-hand with Andy, too.
Yeah. This is similar to what we did in the jail, where you're promoting somebody to increase duties and responsibilities to fill that position that was vacated as you moved up.
Yeah.
That was, I had been emailing back and forth with Andrea, and that was my question, which I didn't quite get until just now, that you answered it, is why not just promote to the next level within clerk, but as you have explained, she's going to be taking on different duties? So, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make it.
That we approve Tyler clerk one, $36.6, the data specialist, DS one, $38.8.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to promote a title clerk, one, from $36.6, to data specialist, DS one, to $38.8, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion?
One question. You want to do that? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. You got it, okay?
Congratulations.
Thank you, y'all.
Congratulations.
Okay. All right. Next item, item number six, discuss and take appropriate action, allow the county judge to sign the Tyler Odyssey Training Agreement for the offices of County Court at Law, County Clerk, and County Attorney for a cost of $10,000. This will come out of the contract services line. I tell you, we have Mr. Drew. Good to see you.
Judge Commissioners, the item before you is training for those three departments listed. Basically, they have reached out to us, asking if we could have some kind of help to go through their processes. And so, I got with Tyler, of course, and we have put together a week-long, in-person training for the departments. We do have the budget for that, and so really, we're just requesting that you would approve this for those three departments.
Okay. You're recommending it?
Yes.
And it's like, it'd be a good thing?
Yes, I think it'd be good.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions of Drew?
Yeah, just, so it shows here on this, or point out if I'm missing something. It says $7,000 on this contract?
It's $7,000 plus travel.
Plus travel?
Yes, for Tyler.
And you just factored in?
Yes. Yes, sir, I did.
Thank you.
And the training will be, my question was about the different functions within the department, and Drew's explained that it's going to be tailored.
Yes, it'll be tailored.
And everyone won't be there the entire week. They're going to go to their specific training.
Yes, ma'am. It is tailored to the departments and so, and basically how they interface with the other departments, of course. Because again, all this is basically from data in all the way through, you know, the attorney's office, clerk's office, court, and really just kind of bringing everything together.
Good.
And so, I think it's good for the departments, and I'm glad they reached out.
This is one other question. You know, we've been trying to work on getting converted over to Tyler for what, however many years, but, and this is beyond and they're what they were supposed to do in the first place?
Yes. This is more hands-on, one-on-one approach.
Okay.
To get a more in-depth, really, training for them. And of course, we will also be videoing all this, so perpetually, we'll have this for the future.
Okay.
So, when they bring on new employees, et cetera, we can give them that information in that video. So, hopefully, we only need this one for those departments.
Any further discussion? Okay. If not, do I hear a motion?
Is a move that we allow the county judge to sign the Tyler Odyssey Training Agreement for the offices of County Court at Law, County Clerk, County Attorney for a cost of $10,000, and this will come out of contract services line.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson, allow the county judge to sign the Tyler Odyssey Training Agreement, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Good luck to you, Drew. Thank you. Next, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I have two quick comments on payroll and treasures quarterly investment, so I'd like to pull those, too.
Okay, what's A4? Is that it?
A1 and A4, yes.
Okay. You want to pull those for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, one of the things that I've been noticing on the payroll was the number of employees, which seemed kind of high to me based on our conversations during budget time, where we were talking about $325, $340, but it's $392, so I just had a question about that. And it wasn't during election time, so we didn't have extra election workers here. So, I worked with Melissa and got a breakdown. So, this is just, I just thought I'd read off what I received from Melissa, just so everyone understands why our total number of employees that's being paid through payroll is 392 versus what we had talked about during budget of $325, $340, something around that range. So, we have 308 employees with insurance benefits. We have 13 paid, whose benefits are effective in March and April. We have 20 that avoid benefits, 13 in adult probation with no benefits, 31 part-time temporary employees with no benefits, two, Bufkin and Sinclair, are they in those departments or them? I didn't understand that line exactly.
Are they just actually paid, but they do not?
Not receive benefits, okay. And then two in the ag extension office with no benefits, and then three retiring, but no benefits after January. So, that's how it adds up to 392. I was just, I just kept looking at that week after week, wondering why are we, why is our payroll so high when we were talking about $325, $340 range? But that's it. So, thank you very much for that information. So, the other one is on the treasures quarterly investment report. One of the things that's missing off of that, and I've talked to LeAnn about it, is the percent yield. I think it's very important for us, especially during this time where interest rates, where we're investing at interest rates that are quite a bit different from where we were two years ago. And percent yield is a normal metric that's provided on investment reports, so I talked to her about adding that. She's not here today, so I'll just follow up with that, but that was something that we may need to have on a future agenda, to ask her if anyone else thinks that that's valid or important thing to have. We may discuss that later. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. With those two discussions then, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay. This brings us then to be discussed. Road Ops, Mr. Donald Lenny. Thank you for coming, Ms. Erwin. Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Lenny.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. The gen item that we have is discuss and take appropriate action on accepting the following section of Contrary Creek Road onto the county road system due to the notice of a disannexation received from the city of Granbury on January 16th of 2024. The one in question is, is from Highway 144 up to Comanche Cove Drive. That's the entrance into Comanche Harbor. It's a length of 1,945 feet. I did speak with the county attorney. This is the first time it's happened since I've been here, and he did recommend that we officially, that I go through court and officially re, have it re-approved for the county road system, so we can go ahead and start maintaining it.
I guess we don't really have any choice in that if they want to do it.
No, not really.
So, and it's, well, anybody have any questions or comment? So, you can handle it then. You have enough in your budget to take care of those, that road?
Yes, sir.
I think it's pretty, they're going to have to do something with it. It's pretty tough, aren't you?
Yes, we're going to, when we start maintaining it, soon as the weather permits, but yeah.
Okay. Good.
Number one on our agenda.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to accept into the county road system Contrary Creek Road from Highway 144 to Comanche Cove Drive, a total of 1,945 feet.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to accept this section of Contrary Creek Road into the county road system due to the disannexation from the city of Granbury from Highway 144 to Comanche Cove, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Lenny. Okay. Now, we have road development. Mr. Clint Head, number one, set a public hearing for the following replats. All these going to be set on the same day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the Rancho Brazos lots 48R and 50R, South Oats Estates lots 8R, 1R, and 10R, Rolling Creek Ranch Phase III, and the Landings East. What date do you suggest?
Staff recommends is setting the public hearing for February 27th, Commissioner's Court.
February 27th?
Yes, sir.
February 27th, 9:00 a.m., Commissioner's Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to set a public hearing on all four of the replats as stated.
Second.
For February the 27th, 9:00 a.m., second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Next, discuss and consider the final plat of Owen Estates, lots 1 and 2, block 1. Yes, sir.
This final plat is a subdividing of a two-acre tract that is part of the John Schroeder Survey Abstract Number 505. This final plat is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 4 and will be creating two one-acre lots that will be served by Aqua Texas Water and Onsite Sewerage Facilities. These lots will be accessing existing Meyer Court. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Since they've taken this two acres down to one each, but they're served with public water, we're okay on that.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat, Owen Estates, lots 1 and 2, block 1, in Precinct 4.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the final plat of Owen Estates, lots 1 and 2, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-1.
Judge, he's.
5-0, I'm sorry.
He's next to pretty much the same thing. I mean, they're different plats, but you could run them the same public hearing if you'd like.
Okay. All right. Now, at this time, at 9:25, we're going to convene into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Summerlin, Phase 1, lots 24R-1R and 26R-1R. Yes, sir. Tell us about that.
All right. This replat is being done to adjust the common light line between lots 24R1 and 26R1. Property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 1, served by public water and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat, and all comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Does the public, any member of the public, wish to discuss anything about the Summerlin Phase 1 here? Any commissioner have any question or comment? If not, at 9:26, we're going to convene back into Commissioner's Court, and do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Summerlin, Phase 1, lots 24R-1R and 26R-1.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of Summerlin, Phase 1, lots 24R-1R, 26R-1R, and I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next, at now 9:27, we're going to convene into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, lot 76 through 79. Tell us about that, Mr. Head.
This replat is being done to subdivide four two-acre lots from the common area of Blue Branch Ranch. The property is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct 1, served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat, and all comments have been addressed.
Okay. Any member of the public wish to make any comment about the replat of Blue Branch Ranch? Any commissioner have anything to say? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the replat.
Never mind. It's 9:28 here. We're going to convene back into Commissioner's Court. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Now, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, lots 76 through 79.
Hear a second?
Second.
All right. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, lot 76 through 79, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay. Now, at 9:29, we're going to convene back into a public hearing to discuss and consider the site development plan of Dollar General at Contrary Creek Edition, Lot 1. Mr. Head.
This site development plan for Dollar General is at 3510 Contrary Creek Road. Site plan will be on Lot 1, Block 1, Contrary Creek Edition in Precinct 1. The property is located in the Rural District in Precinct 1 and is served by Aqua Texas Water and Onsite Sewerage Facilities. Proposes to create a 10,542-square-foot building that will be used for retail. We have a letter on file from Aqua Texas stating they can serve the water to the site and environmental health, as said, the sewer plan is good. So, staff has reviewed the site plan, and all comments have been addressed. I think you have some speakers.
Okay. Well, I do know at this time with public hearing that we have a number of people that have owned property near this site where it's proposed. So, would you please come up here to the microphone, state your name and address?
I'm sorry? Okay, well, he can speak also.
Okay. We've got, it's a public hearing, so we're going to have him speak, too. Okay. Okay.
Are we ready?
Go ahead. Please state your name.
My name is Sandra Joanne Clay. I go by Joanne, and my husband, Al Clay, live on the corner of Contrary Creek Road and Blue Bonnet Drive. And I understand, just because I walked out in my yard and the man was surveying, saying they were going to dig up half of my bar ditch and they were going to put a Dollar General in. I go, were y'all not even going to say anything to us? I've taken pictures. I don't know how we would show those. I asked you earlier if we could show what we have done to this property that would, you know, digging up the road and putting a Dollar General in right across the street, maybe from here to that wall from our property, would lower our property values. We're out there every day, sometimes eight hours a day watering individually plants because it's therapy for my husband, who has PTSD severely, and myself, because I had never gone through trying to take care of somebody in this condition, and the yard's beautiful. because it's therapy for my husband who has PTSD severely. And myself, because I had never gone through trying to take care of somebody in this condition. And, and the yard's beautiful.
Well, go ahead and hand me the pictures and we will let, we'll let each of the- just let us, we'll look at the pictures. Okay. I have seen them already. You gave them to me earlier this morning and I have looked at them.
There's some pine trees on the very front there, 60-foot tall that I planted when they were that tall. Okay, and there are other people who live on both sides of the street down from me that take very good care of their yards also because they have pride. They want their yards to look good and, and not look like a dump. When I first moved there, all we had were stickers. And day after day after day, I dug them up, coming up with three bags to fit each one into a dump dumpster. Until I finally got them all up and planted the entire yard in San Augustine grass, which is about six inches tall everywhere. My husband loves it. And this is just, as I say, from here to the wall over there away from us. It's what you see when you look out our front windows, a Dollar General. And whatever that may bring, people setting up around the building in the evening time, wondering about what type of people that will bring. And as I say, I feel it will lower our property values significantly. And this man talks about eminent domain, which I have no idea. Are you reimbursed for that? Do they just take it from you? Is there no question, they just put up the Dollar General and you have to take it?
Could I ask you something? Was that over here, this side? Okay. Did that corner lot, are you on the corner across the street? Is, did that corner lot have a for-sale sign on it, ever?
Ever?
Yeah.
No.
So, it was, it was just a vacant corner lot?
No. Freddie Crawford, I was looking for a house. We had saved for years and my husband built bases overseas. And like Afghanistan for 12 years, he was over 13 bases. And finally getting captured in Africa on Cameroon base, going to the airport to come home on his birthday, 9/11, five years ago. And he said, "We've saved enough money, go find a house." And I got ahold of Freddie Crawford and she took me around. A lot of houses had no trees in the yard, no attractive qualities whatsoever, no trees, no yard, and I wouldn't even get out of the car in several of the places. And we went by this one and I said, "Why don't you see if we can look at that?" That's, there was not a for-sale sign to start with, no.
But you, but you looked at it, you looked at that lot at that point?
It had a house on it.
Okay, all right, that's all I got on that one.
Joanne, could you, I have a couple of questions about these pictures. Could you come up?
I'm, I'm sorry, my ears were caught. I just stopped up. So, I'm trying to figure out, can you tell me? That is actually across the street, that does show across the street. That is not the more, this is the Dollar General. Yeah, well, I mean, as you can see, I have 50 of these, all colors, including purple, crepe marlins, and yes, that is across the street. Very hidden, that lot. I'm just trying to figure out whether it's based under your houses there. That is also basically there and there's lines there.
One, I've seen them here.
Thank you for calling my attention.
Okay.
Your hydrangeas to grow.
I'm sorry.
I was just commenting on your beautiful hydrangeas. I can't, I can't, I've tried and I can't get them to grow.
Oh, come to my house. I always think if it dies, it's not that far to Lowe's or Home Depot.
That's true.
Well, we don't need to have a, this-
Public hearing.
Okay, do you have anything else to say? We've got other people here to talk.
Well, I would actually be very much against it. We've, I have spent, ever since we bought that house, working after I got off work from the Highway Patrol till I couldn't see at night, doing clothes, whatever. Every day I would be out there doing something, digging weeds for a lot of years. And so, I put the last 24 years into that yard, spending probably about $2,000 a year in plants and trees to put into that yard. San Augustine cost too. And I put this much money because the, we have pride in our yard. We waited so many years to have a house for a home. Can hardly think about a Dollar General moving in right across the street. And I guess that's what I'd like to say. And it is therapy for my husband, who at 75 years old, has PTSD that he will never get over, his back's broken in two places, and his feet would have to have every joint replaced with metal joints from being beaten with RK-47 for days. And finally being rescued by the FBI and will never be the same. And sees a psychologist twice a week forever. This is very calming to him and to me. And this January 1st was our 53rd anniversary.
Congratulations and congratulations to be building a beautiful place and you do have it. And I certainly understand your position, okay? I really do.
Thank you.
So, thank you for coming down, speaking.
Now, there are others.
There are, there's other people here that would need to speak then, so.
Thank you for letting me talk.
All right, you're quite welcome. That's very nice. Thank you, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank your husband for his service.
All right, Cody Woodruff.
Good morning. My name is Cody Woodruff. I'm with Evolving Texas in Fort Worth. I'm actually just the civil engineering for the project, speaking in favor and available for questions and maybe help alleviate any concerns.
Well, I think one of the questions is, you heard this lady speaking about somehow or another the drainage situation, how it's gonna affect the bar ditch or any drainage onto her property. Have you addressed that?
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure who she spoke with.
Can you, right now?
I'm not 100% sure who she spoke with. Are you on the south side of Contray Creek? Like, like the Dollar General will be north of you?
I don't know, are you on the south side?
South side of Contray?
I blew mine, yes.
On blue, okay.
There in the corner.
Okay.
Behind the Thomas.
She's on the corner of Woodline and Country Lane. I'm sorry.
You're up there.
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Okay, so, so the site itself, it tends to naturally drain more towards Contray Creek versus toward Blue Bonnet Creek. It's kinda elevated right now. And if you look at the contours, a lot of them are draining northeast towards Contray Creek, some to the northwest to the property owner of the church that's right there. So, we plan on bringing it back to Contray Creek. We've been doing some downstream assessments to show that our site's a little over an acre has a very little effect on like the downstream system going towards the creek. So, anything in Blue Bonnet would stay, should stay as is because we're not increasing to that, that street as far as drainage goes.
So, when she said someone was digging up her bar ditch, how did-
I'm not 100% sure who that would have been. The only, so there is a water line that we would tie into on that side, but no one should be digging up a bar ditch or anything like that. No one started construction. We've probably had some people out there doing surveying like she noted, but I'm not sure who that would have been, who she spoke with.
Do you have any concerns about what these people are talking about here about the bar ditch?
Come to the mic, please.
I have concerns, I understand that they're concerned and if I were there, I'd have the same concerns, but I can't, I gotta go by just what the law says and what the regulations say.
Pardon me, it doesn't violate any laws, any drainage.
They're not asking for any variances, so.
Okay.
You did say there's public, there is a private water out there?
Aqua Texas.
Aqua Texas.
And Jeannie's already reviewed the septic.
Yeah, it's 1.3 acres or something like that, right? So, there's plenty of room for an onsite sewer, right?
Yes, it, there is, but the onsite sewer will, the permit will not be permitted until the plat is filed with the county clerk's office. They have yet to file the plat. They will be boring under Blue Bonnet and tying in, and tying into the water line on the south side. But that is the proposed tap that we have been given.
Thank you.
And the natural topography of that area, everything drains back down- Towards the highway. Contray Creek, yeah, towards 144. But whatever, yeah, maybe that was Aqua digging to set a meter or something, but they, and I absolutely need to put that back in the condition that they found.
I didn't understand the eminent domain comment either. We're not putting a road through there.
Yeah, that's, it's not an eminent domain issue. That doesn't, that doesn't come into this because they already own the property. So, that, I'm not sure what.
What did you say, Clint? I'm sorry, Ms. Clint.
She'd made a comment about eminent domain. The county would have to do the eminent domain and we can only do that for our road, so I don't understand that comment.
So, there's no taking of any, of her property or anybody else's property? Dollar General bought the property that they need and then there's public access roads leading to Dollar General. Am I right? Okay, well.
Anybody, are there any other speakers, Judge?
Yes, we got a lot more. Well, one more is Joanne Clay. And then, I understand there's a whole bunch of people there, but Joanne Clay did fill out a-
She spoke.
A public participation form, but you don't need a public participation form. We're in a public hearing. So, if any of y'all want to speak that are neighbors, you can come up. But Ms. Clay, you did write and submit one, so please.
She's already spoken.
Yeah, come on up here and speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
My name is Angela Ebert and I'm a neighbor of Joanne and Al. And we're on Country Lane and not far from where the Dollar General is gonna be proposed or proposed built. I just wanna say that this is a, a very quiet neighborhood. People walk their dogs, people jog, and it's gonna turn into some commercial thing with a Dollar General going in and Blue Bonnet probably getting widened and lots of traffic. And this is just a nice, quiet residential area. And it just doesn't seem to me like it would be a good fit at all.
Have y'all got an HOA?
And yes, I worry about the property value as well.
Okay, sir, did you have anything to say?
I'm here to support her.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I would. Looking at the-
Tell us your name first. Tell us your name.
My apologies. My name is John Ebert, E-B-E-R-T. From my front yard, I'd be able to see, see this Dollar General going in. And then, you know, through the years, we've been there for 10 years now, you know, I keep seeing people bring in Phil and more Phil and more Phil, you know, to bring up the height of that piece of property. And we always were fearful, quite honestly, about what was gonna happen over there. You know, rumors were flying, they were gonna put in apartments and, and everything else. And now it's going to be a Dollar General. I'm afraid, you know, like I say, the traffic this is gonna generate, I think you're gonna have to, you know, improve Blue Bonnet because it's, you know, sometimes it gets a little tight in there, just a truck coming over the top of a hill or something like that. And I think you're gonna have some fender benders. And, you know, quite honestly, it's, to me, it's gonna be a problem. I really do. And I realize it's their land, they can probably do what they want to, but it doesn't necessarily make the neighbors happy. If that's, you know, and you look up, especially for Joanne, I mean, that's like-
Right there, right across the street.
Right there, right across the street. And you're gonna see this and you got the traffic. We already got problems with people, you know, basically throwing beer cans and bottles and whatnot and-
It's just gonna get worse.
And we, and Joanne is so good at picking up all the trash that everybody else drops and increase the traffic through there, there's gonna be more garbage in the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments anybody else wish to address, Commissioners?
My name is Rita Gilbreth and they've pretty much said most everything we need to know. First of all, could I address Commissioner Eagle? When you were asking that question to Joanne earlier, were you talking about the property that they're gonna put it on, a Dollar General or her property?
The property that they, that was across the street, that vacant lot? I was just curious as to whether it had a, ever, if it had a for-sale sign on it at any time or what have you?
I think she thought you were talking about her property, but no, that property has not ever had a for-sale sign.
And she said hers didn't either, so, okay.
We've been there 20 years. And like I said, they've pretty much said everything, but my main concern is, I don't have anything against Dollar Generals in general. I go to them sometime, but I just don't like the idea of one in my neighborhood. It's gonna bring our property values down. And I've been told by realtors that it would. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Gilbreth. And what I was wondering about is, we're talking about approving the plat, but we haven't seen a plat. How can, I mean, do y'all have it?
The plat was approved back in 2023.
Then what is this for if it's a?
This is for the sound development of the Dollar General.
How, where are they gonna set it? That's what, that's what I'm, you know, we don't really know what's going on, except that they're gonna, we don't know what's going on, except they're gonna put it over there. And, you know, it's hard for us to make comments on its development too.
Drew, it's attached to the agenda if you wanna display it.
Okay, now, this is, this is-
Blue Bonnet.
Blue Bonnet. Here's Blue Bonnet.
There gonna be a driveway up here too, to go to the Dollar General?
No, it's a water line connection up there.
What about how they gonna get to the Dollar General, over here or?
Over here and down here.
Oh, see, they're gonna be a driveway on Blue Bonnet then, right? There's gonna be a lot of traffic congestion.
Yeah.
Do you know how long Dollar General has owned that property?
No.
No, I'm talking to the representative of Dollar General.
No, no, sir, I do not.
I'm sorry?
I do not, no. So, that's the developer.
Come to the mic, please. We try to get this on video.
Yes, I do not know how long the, the property owners own it. Vicero is the developer of the property.
This, this looks like, I mean, I'm not sure just where the measurements are. It looks like the entrance is gonna be right in front of, of Joanne and Al's property. It's, 'cause, I wonder where Country Lane comes on.
Mr. Mills.
The, the engineering mark is dated 12/19 of '23. So, that was when the, when this particular drawing was, you know, signed off by the engineer.
That's all.
Mr. Mills, I, I think it's been discussed here- Mr. Mills, I, I, I think it's been discussed here that. Dollar General does own this property and has owned it, I don't know for how long at the time, and that the ingress and egress, the roads are already there, they're not going to have to take any other roads, not going to have to do anything to the roads, at least not at this time on the deal. And, uh, I assuming that the zoning in this particular area is both residential and retail?
There is no zoning in unincorporated areas of Hood County.
That was my question. So there's no zoning. Some people, you know, you have the zoning in certain residential areas that you cannot have any kind of a retail store or, uh, other types of industrial property or, uh, trailer houses or different things, different type of zoning applies. But where you are in the county, there is no zoning. Am I right on that?
It's outside of.
From a legal perspective, Mr. Mills, um, really, there's nothing that, I guess these individuals, I hate to say this, is that if Dollar General bought the property and they own the property in this particular area, and there's no zoning restrictions, they're not, uh, going to change the topography of the area where there's any drainage that's going to be affecting your property. I just don't know if there's any legal recourse that you folks have. It's just like I was explaining to you up here, you have such a beautiful yard up there, and I totally understand your position and your beautiful roses and what they are, but if somebody next door bought property next door to you and said that I'm allergic to your particular roses, and would you dig up all those roses that you used to pickaxe, like you explained to me that you couldn't use a shovel, but you're going to have to take all of them up and destroy them? And you said, but this is my land, and I could grow on my land what I want to grow on it, and he's saying, but it interferes with my enjoyment of my land. And that's what you've got here. And I understand where y'all are coming from, that a Dollar General store is to y'all an eyesore for your homes. You're going to have to look at the, the, out there and see the general door, you're going to have to see the increased traffic and different type of people where you know everybody in your neighborhood. And if somebody comes into your neighborhood, y'all probably know everybody and every car that comes in there. You know, y'all probably watch each other's property when you go on vacation. And I understand that, that's a close knit neighborhood. So legally speaking, though, uh, you know, the ownership of property and ownership of property rights is kind of a basic tenet, and that's why you always have this situation when the population grows. So have I misstated anything, Mr. Mills, from a legal perspective? Is there anything I left out that you can?
No, that's, um, I got pretty steeped in this with the case that we had with the Duns when they sued us. And, uh, we won in that case in district court, and it's on appeal now. In that case, we allowed the development, of course, and then the neighbors sued us, not successfully. But in briefing that to the court, there's a case called Schroder from 2022. It's the Supreme Court of Texas. And there's a line in there that states that a governing body like commissioners' court or, or a city has a duty to approve a conforming plat, but does not have a reciprocal duty to deny a non-conforming plat. So in other words, if a plat maybe has a variance or an exception and you allow it, you don't have to deny it if it maybe doesn't meet every spec of your rules. But if it does meet all of your requirements, you have a duty to approve it. And so what I see, even though the neighbors, I mean, I, I, I hear their concerns like you do, I mean, I think they, they're not, they're not happy, and maybe it does affect their property values, but if we vote against it, there's a high likelihood of getting sued, and there's a high likelihood of losing.
So they have, according to Mr. Head, they have, um, met all the requirements to do this, correct? He's nodding his head, yes.
Right.
And you're saying that with that caveat, we have to approve it? And here's the other side of that, to continue with the argument, and I, I haven't read the Schroder case, but I'm going to.
Okay.
If we don't approve it, then I think we're subject to being sued, number one. I agree with you. And number two, I think that would be a taking, because we would be telling the people that own the property across the street that they can't do something with it. And so it's, it's a touchy place for us to be in, as long as they've done everything they're supposed to do. It puts us in a precarious position because I, listen, I, I agree with how you feel. I mean, I understand how you feel. Looking at the pictures of your place, it's a beautiful, beautiful place. And, uh, but there's no zoning, there's no HOA. It's an unincorporated area, and so it's, uh, you know, people get to do with their property what they want within legal reason.
Right. The, the case law refers to this as being a ministerial duty, not a discretionary decision from the court. You have a ministerial duty to, to approve a conforming plat. So I, I think that would probably hold if they sued us, if you denied it.
And legislation in 2019 did away with indefinite denials. There's no such thing as a definite denial anymore. You have to state the reasons why you're denying, and they have to have unlimited amount of time to address those reasons you denied it, and then it's automatically approved.
I just wanted to ask, can y'all not put up a wall or decorate it some between, on the Blue Bonnet side to kind of screen off our properties? And I know that's, uh, uh, always an issue, but, but, you know, that's, that would help the neighborhood.
Yeah, and that, that would be a decision I'd have to talk to the developer.
Speak up, speak up so we can hear you. Move the mic, you can move the mic.
You guys hear me? Okay. So that would be a decision by the developer that I'd run by? I know walls were, would probably be out of the question just because it didn't block their view of the, the building, but certainly can discuss, you know, maybe some landscaping. I, I just don't know to what extent, as far as their operations go for Dollar General.
Boy, this is, this is one of those things that, that you just hate, because I completely understand your position. You have beautiful property over there, and you, you know, yes, this, this affects your life. It absolutely does. Counties don't have any zoning authority at all. We can't come in and say, okay, this area over here can be residential, this area can be commercial. We don't have that authority. The state does not give us the power to have that kind of a decision. Cities can make those decisions, and they can, they can do that. Anything that we would do or put into place has to be applicable across the entire county. And that's one of the issues that we get into, is if, you know, i- if we set up some law that would fit in this particular case to prevent that, then that would have to apply to somewhere in a completely different situation that makes all the sense in the world. The, the problem comes down to between personal property rights. This, you know, if it's somebody's dream to do something with a particular piece of property, and, you know, I understand that this is a Dollar General, and this is a faceless, you know, corporation to some extent, but if this were somebody that had built their entire life and they wanted to go put this property in there, and, and we stood in the way, I think we're preventing their liberty, their, their, uh, personal property rights. And it gets to, it, it's, it's a very unfortunate situation. We completely understand, but our hands are tied in, in doing anything to prevent this. So, but I think Joanne wanted to.
Yes, yes, it's got to be on the record.
Apologize for having allergies, but most of what was said, I believe this could have been turned up, and I would have heard it. Is there not a case of eminent domain which was thrown at me over my fence?
Yeah, eminent domain is whenever.
Doesn't figure into it?
No, no, they own, they own that property over there. Eminent domain is when somebody is trying to take your property for some kind of public use, and that's not.
Are they going to come and dig up my bar ditch?
The water company may have to dig something up to, to put a tap in there.
To tee into it, but it's not like they're going to pave clear up to my fence.
Oh, no, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
That's a.
But as you said, they need to restore, once they're finished with their work, they need to restore the bar ditch to its original.
Are you saying they'll put a water pipe in or something? Because a few years ago, someone came out and surveyed, and they said that the water pipes were too small for a business to operate on, so I shouldn't really have anything to worry about, because it would be a lot of money for them to enlarge the water pipes. I said, okay, so I won't worry. And now this has come up. Will they put their water pipes in and then cover that up? Or is it going to be the edge of the road right up to my fence?
It should be a dedicated easement for that water line.
So be, will it be the road?
Should it be right there? They're on your property, there's, the water company has an easement and has so much right of way. Anything that is built or put in their easement, they have the right to remove, but they don't have to put it back. So if your fence is in the water company's easement. Then you're safe. They shouldn't, but they have the right to repair or fix their water line. They have a right to make a tap for someone else.
Okay.
And, and, and that's not necessarily going to be on your property. That's, I mean, I think we're being a little presumptuous here that they would come over based on your saying that somebody was in your ditch. They may not be in your property at all.
I hate to see the edge of the road because I maintain that. I get out there and mow, and a lot of days I don't walk too well. I have 20 pins in my feet from, uh, breaking my bones in my feet, and I have four hip surgeries. I have a plate in my pelvis, holding my pelvis together with three-inch deck squares. So it's an effort to mow, but I do it and have for years because I like the results. So, but they're not going to pave right up to my fence and take all of that.
No, I, I wouldn't. No, I would say, I would say there's no fear of that going on. That's, uh, yeah, no, I don't think we're anywhere near that situation.
Well, you can imagine me when I heard easement, I mean, not even easement, eminent domain. I was like, what is that? I'm not an attorney, I didn't know what was going on. But as you see, I had something to worry about.
Yeah, they're, yeah, you don't, they're not going to take any of your property or anything, so, yeah, yeah, I think that was.
I had to have them come back out because the actual water company sat out there in their truck with their feet up in the windows, drinking beer and eating sandwiches and throwing the beer cans and the sandwich wrappers out right there at the, where they were working. And they left a hole that a small child could fall in, and I called them, and they come out and fixed it, but I had to call them. I thought, here we go again. Hopefully not.
If just, um, maybe you get Mr. Woodruff's contact information and, you know, work together on the, um, barrier, whatever your ideas were on something a little more visibly appealing.
If I just have something, someone to call or something, kind of give me some idea of, do I go get some more sods or is it going to be road or? They're half of it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
I don't know, but.
Okay, I appreciate you very much.
Well, thank you. I think this has been good, at least Dollar General, if you can report back to them. We've got some concerned citizens. Try to be a good neighbor. Y'all don't need anybody out there picketing your store out there or whatever. You need to be a good neighbor, and y'all try to be a good neighbor, and maybe it will.
Be a bad situation.
Be the best you can do, okay? All right, good deal. Thank y'all all.
Thank you, Senator.
I just spoke to the engineer about the concerns about the ditch from the bore, and he would say that he would pass on to the contractors to make sure that ditch was patched back properly.
Good. Y'all make them aware of what kind of the sentiment is out there, and we're kind of a neighborhood that y'all going into. And I commend all of you for being good neighbors to each other and protecting each other and being aware of each other. I, I really do like that. That's America. So thank all of y'all for coming down here today and sharing your concerns. I really do appreciate that, and that really helps us, too. And I think it gives everybody an understanding about property rights, you know? It's just. Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Staff can only recommend, oh.
Go ahead.
Staff can only recommend conditional approval in this contingent on the filing of the plat.
We need to, yeah, we're in public hearings still.
Okay. All right, now, at 10:07, we are going to convene into the commissioners' court now at this time. So at this time, do I hear a motion?
It is with no joy that I have to do this, but I move that we approve the site development plan contingent on the.
What?
Condition.
Filing.
Conditional. Of the, filing the plat.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the site development plan of Dollar General on Contrary Creek contingent upon approval of the plat.
Filing of the plat.
Filing of the plat. Okay. Do I hear second? Second. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Thank y'all all for coming down, really appreciate that. I think it's helped everybody here, and I'm sorry we couldn't give you the kind of release. I know that all of you were thinking of, but make sure that Dollar General's aware of everything, okay?
Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, thank y'all for coming. Like I said, y'all got to. All right. I'm going to come down, I want a clipping of your rose and the thing, I'm big into roses, okay? Anyway, financial, Ms. Stephanie Matlock, you get to come up here to the podium.
Oh.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The auditor's office has reviewed all invoices for this court and recommends payment.
Okay, well, the first thing was the certification of payment of invoices. You got all that?
Got it.
$253,886.36, right?
Right.
Boy, that's less. What, why is that so low? Is it just the way it is?
It's cyclical. Sometimes there's more, sometimes there's less, depending on.
All right.
She's been in here three weeks and already cut it down, I'll tell you. I got to make a motion that we approve the bills of $253,886.36.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the payment of the invoices, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, consider the financial reports received and reviewed by the audit department. So you, everybody was received and reviewed this month, right?
Yep, the auditor's office has reviewed these monthly reports and asked that the court accepts them. There's a couple that we're working with still to finish out December, but.
Okay, well, good. Good work. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the reports as listed.
Second. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to accept the financial reports that were received and reviewed by the audit department for the period of January 1 through January 15, 2024, second by, did you second it, Commissioner?
I think it was Eagle.
Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Now, we're going to go back to the miscellaneous business to be discussed and considered for approval. And item number one was to convene into executive session per the Texas government code on personnel matters to conduct interviews for the. personnel matters to conduct interviews for the facility maintenance director's position. And also, item number five, convene into executive session to discuss a lease agreement as authorized by the Texas government code, no action will be taken. So rather than have all the department's head stay around at nine o'clock, 9:05 this morning, and take another tongue lashing by Fay Landom like she usually gives to me, but when we go into executive session, we decided to do it this way. So really, as far as the citizens and all department heads is concerned, this meeting is adjourned, but the commissioners' court is going to go into executive session to consider these two items. Thank y'all very much for coming.
At 11:42, we are convening back into commissioners' court, having been in executive session. And our first item, concerns with item number one, is we have conducted additional interviews for the facility maintenance director position. And after the second round of interviews, was there any commissioner would like to make a motion?
Yes, I would make the motion that we make the job offer for facilities maintenance director to David Chad Kennington. Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to appoint or offer the job to David Chad Kennington, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Motion carries unanimous five zero. The item number six under miscellaneous business, no action was taken, and so nothing to be done. I'm sorry, number five, number five, the executive session, about the string of lease no action was taken. To announce, given that, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.